We did submit a, you know, detailed storm water management report with the package. And it shows that we are mitigating all the applicable design storms through the 50 year storm event, which meets all local requirements. For this project, we also submitted a lighting plan. And the, the lighting for this project will be satisfied through the installation of four pole mounted lights and then two building mounted lights. And you can see by this plan that there will be no light pollution as a result of this project. We meet all local design standards as it relates to that. And then another improvement that our, or design component that we have with this project is the landscaping. We prepared a landscaping plan in collaboration with Jim Benjamin from Garden Gate Landscapes. And this consists primarily of planting a few street trees along Old Concord Road. Just went by it there. And then there's some landscape bed areas along the entrance to the site that would help, you know, dress up the area. And then of course, as we talked about in some detail at the, the last meeting, we are proposing a evergreen buffer along the west boundary, or which would be the rear of the site. That's shown on here through a combination of arborvitae, green giant arborvitae, and then balsam fir plantings. We did make some revisions to this plan set to incorporate some of, some comments from staff. That included improving the erosion control design, as well as shifting some of the landscaping along the rear of the site to really improve the buffering to the, the closest residential property. The layout of this project does meet and exceed all local setback requirements. And as I just talked about, we have designed the site to provide what we believe to be adequate buffering to the surrounding properties. We are proposing that this project be constructed in phases, or at least have the option to be constructed in phases. And that is noted on, on the site plan on note 15, which states that phase one would consist of grading the site, constructing all of the drainage improvements, and installing at least one of the propane tanks, and completing the landscaping. That first phase would also consist of constructing the building, I believe. And then the second phase would, would really be just constructing the remainder of the site. The anticipated hours of operation are also noted on the site plan. We are proposing hours of Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. In the bulk storage or facility and diesel pumps would be open 24 hours, just to accept deliveries and, and to service the public. And again, just to touch on the, the public fueling, that would be by permission only, and it's my understanding that there'd still be keypad access to that. So it's not just open to anybody. It's, it's really customers and clients of Tridelli Fuel. So that, that's a summary of my presentation this evening, Mr. Chairman. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions the board may have, or if any of the design team has anything that they want to, to address at this time, it certainly can do so as well.
Any comments from the, the board?
I've, I've driven by the site as well as driven down Stone Falls Road and looked at the existing home as well as the nursery, and I think the buffer works well. And I, I think it fits the, fits the bill for what we're looking for, for that zone.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Demora, Plan Board alternate. May I speak?
Yes, you may.
Question on the cupola. Will that be illuminated?
The cupola in the, in the office building?
On the office building, will that be illuminated from the inside?
We do have a similar situation in Milford, and we, we'll leave it on around holiday season. We don't usually get any complaints about it, but I mean, we could set it up however would be necessary.
One other question, if I may. On the floor plan, there's no trench drain shown or floor drains. Are there going to be any? Or will there be a more descriptive, descriptive floor plan?
There are no floor drains proposed at this time.
Thank you. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is, uh, is this going to be gated? When you speak of hours and then you have the facility in there that, that, are you basically, when you're stating hours, are you stating the hours that you plan on using it, or?
It would, it would primarily be the hours that it's going to be, going to be manned, or there'd be people in the office, you know, occupying the site for walk-in customers and so on.
But it will, it won't be gated. It will be open, you know, because of the pumps for the diesel.
The plan is for it to be open and not be gated. Yep.
Very good. Mark, any comments?
Chad, could you just describe the, the state permit that you'll be going, going for? Are we required to get as far as the, the fuel oil storage? There's a state permit, I believe, that's required as part of this.
Sure.
You know, the specific state regulations that are in place for the storage of fuel oil above ground.
Sure. There, there is a permits through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually let Rob, or Bob Caluccio answer that, because that's really his area of expertise.
Excuse me? For the sake of the minute taker, folks need to state their name before speaking. She can't keep track because she can't see us. I mean, she can see us, but it's not like a meeting table.
Okay. Nice. Okay, Robert Caluccio from Web Engineering. Yes, the, um, the oil facility and the diesel tanks will all have, you know, the tanks are refueling. All very detailed drawings have to be sent to the Department of Environmental Services. They, they have to meet the state's underground storage tank regulations, which bring in all of the national fire codes, national standards, the very, New Hampshire. We work in New England. But New Hampshire is particularly strict about approving these plans. And we, they'll have to be spill, federal SPCC, which is spill protection, spill prevention, counter, counter control, uh, counter. Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm new on this Zoom, so I'm, uh, but anyway, they have to meet federal requirements for spill protection. And so there's a number of regulations they'll have to meet, which the Department of Environmental Services will scrutinize to make sure that they do.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Marco has a question. Mark, can you please unmute him?
The bill.
Does that any better?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay.
Sorry, Bill.
I don't, I don't know what happened. Let's see, the question I had could, he explained once again, down by the diesel tanks, there's the, the ones I see on the plan in blue, and then he said, and then off to the right side of that was, was other diesel tanks. Can, can you re-explain that part, please?
I'm gonna take that. Sure. This is, this is Chad Brandon with Fieldstone Land Consultants again. So if you're looking at the plan, you have the, the containment dike, which is the large area with colored tanks on the inside. And then just to the right of that, what those are, it's, it's two 2,000 gallon diesel tanks. And those will service the public diesel fueling station. So there'll be pipe work going to that area there. And there's certain requirements for, you know, distance that it has to be away from the fueling station and so on. And then also for, you know, deliveries and fueling, we felt that the location was best situated on that east side of the site. So that's what those are for.
Okay, thank you. Do they also have containment?
Yes, they do. No.
Thank you.
Um, Mark, Bob Pagano and John also have questions. John has his hand up in the participant list, and Bob Pagano has requested to be unmuted as well.
Okay, I guess when we get to the public section, we can unmute people.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? I have, this is Dean, Chairman. And this is, I have no issue with, you know, anything being done in a progressive manner, as long as, you know, special care is taken into erosion and everything else, so we don't do anything with the wetlands. And I mean, we stated before at the initial meeting is, you know, there's engineer stamps on this, there's permits from DES. There's quite a few hoops to jump through. A lot of people are licensed. We depend on you doing your job and, because we are, I won't say incapable, because some of us are pretty bright, but, you know, of, of keeping track of all of this. And it, it, it's, it's putting your reputations in danger. And it, you know, we're, we're more or less going on the premise that, that everything is above board. And, but with the progression with it, you know, being left between stages sometimes is where there's issues from groundwater and everything else. As long as we can be assured that, you know, proper runoff during this period of time is, is collected and allowed to disperse, I have no issue. If that, if we have no more planning board questions, I suppose we'll open this up to the public. Is there any?
One, one more, Dean.
Yes.
Bill Marco. If maybe Chad could talk about the, the traffic. We have a note here in our packet. Maybe Chad could speak to that for the public record?
Sure, I'd be, I'd be happy to. Again, Chad Brandon with Fieldstone Land Consultants. I guess if I could, Mr. Chairman, I just want to touch on, you know, a couple of the, the statements that you made relative to erosion and sedimentation controls. I, I really didn't touch on that too heavily in my presentation, but the plans do. Certainly include a full-scale erosion and sedimentation control package. Will be, you know, utilizing all best management practices for the construction of this site. And the phasing and the thought process in the phasing, and how, how that was decided, really ticked into consideration, you know, making sure that the site is stabilized and that all stormwater mitigation components are built and stabilized in that first phase to ensure that there's not going to be any detrimental impacts to the jurisdictional areas or, you know, any areas downstream. So just wanted to touch on that. And then to kind of segue into the traffic, that was a discussion that, that came up at, at the last meeting that we were at. And Mr. Fugere did share the traffic report that was prepared for the multi use site, you know, basically across the road. And so what we did is we put together kind of a summary of where we anticipate this business being, you know, initially, and then at year, you know, three to five, years three to five, and then, and so on. And what we've based that on is Tridelli Fuel Company has two facilities currently. Their headquarters are in Milford, so that's a much larger facility. But then they have a facility in Keene that is, is, is a bit smaller, but services a great deal of customers, you know, 2,000 plus customers from, from that area. So in the initial phases for this project, we're anticipating about one to three employees working from the site. It consists of one person in the office, there'd be a driver and a service technician. So that's a pretty small, you know, employee count in, as such, there'd be a pretty small amount of deliveries, you know, that, that are leaving the facility. Now, the, the public fueling station really is a, it's a customer-based program. So it's, it's going to be primarily local contractors or truck, you know, traffic that maybe utilizes Route 9 or 202 on a routine basis. But that, that's going to be pretty insignificant as well. This is not a commercial gas station. It doesn't have a convenience store. We're not doing a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through or any kind of other commercial space that, you know, was being proposed across the road and was fine through the traffic report that was done by Stephen Perna. As the company grows on this site, you know, in years three to five, we're hopeful that it'll grow to the point where we have, or my client has about seven to eight employees or so. That will likely be two office personnel, two oil drivers, two propane drivers, a transport driver, and then one service technician. And then, you know, down the road, we're anticipating that the, you know, the, the, I would say the, the full capacity or the full build-out, if you will, of this facility would probably be similar to the Keene site, which is again servicing about 2,000 or, or higher, I think just over 2,000 customers. And certainly Matt and Andrew can help me with that after I'm done here. But I believe from that site, they have about 14 employees, two office personnel, four oil and propane drivers, two transport drivers, and then two service technicians. Now, when you think about the business, I mean, they're leaving in the morning with a full truck. And, you know, they're, you know, they may not come back until the end of the day. So it's not like there's routine traffic in and out of the site, certainly not significant. I mean, they may come back and get parts and so on, but it's, it's not a big traffic generator. And I think in working with Mr. Fugere on these numbers, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think, you know, there was a certain comfort level with this use. And especially the fact that there was a traffic study done on the adjacent piece that handled a much more intense use in, in that, you know, wasn't going to create, you know, any issues with the adjacent roadway system based on Mr. Perna's recommendations or conclusions as it related to that project. And I can go over some of those numbers if, if you would like. We did not prepare a formal traffic study for this project. We didn't think that it, you know, really rose to that, to that level.
And just to put some, you know, put some context on to it, I just added up Steve's numbers. And again, this is from the, was from the gas station, convenience store across the street. For example, in the morning, there was 138 cars entering, 108 cars exiting. That was the AM peak, just to give you some idea of the scale. And in the evening peak hour, there were 258 cars entering that site and 246 exiting. So obviously, you know, the use that was going to be constructed across the street was, I guess significantly greater than what we're seeing here today on this use.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Scott has a question.
I was being unmuted by Mark.
Okay.
Sorry, Scott.
I agree with the comment on the traffic. It sounds like very minimal impact.
Thing just from, this is Dean, from a common sense point of view, driving past Skip's facility down the road, and they are also doing all their own service there on all their trucks. You really, other than very early in the morning, and when they return, see very little traffic there during the day, other than, you know, a few trucks coming in to refill on their route. I think we're talking very casual traffic. And I'll tend to agree with that.
Dean, I think we're actually talking less traffic, because that's where they house most of their transport.
That's what I stated, you know, they're, they're a repair facility for all their fleet right there. And still the traffic is not heavy at all. I think, you know, again, we're keeping an eye on that intersection from the Old Concord Road to 9 and 202. It obviously somewhere sometime will be a concern, but I don't believe it's going to be caused by this project. Have we basically hammered this enough so we can open it up to the public and see what they have to add?
I'm good with it.
Yep.
Now, let's, let's start the public session. Mark, I don't know how you know who, who to unmute and who not to, but.
So Bob Pagano had his hand up, and also John has his hand up as well.
I'm gonna unmute John.
Thank you. It's kind of moot at this point, but I had requested, Mark, to give permission for recording on the Zoom program, just to help me with, to review it when I do my story. I was gonna record it. It's a little moot at this point, because most of the info has already been given. But I sent a chat message, maybe that wasn't seen.
I'm sorry. I must have missed that, John. That's my bad.
Okay, just, just so you know, you guys can record it rather easily also. That's it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak publicly on this?
Uh, Bob Pagano does.
Where is Bob? Oh, he didn't have his hand up. Bob?
Yes, hello.
Hello, Bob.
Uh, how are you all? Good. I'm glad to hear it. I guess most of my questions have been answered by what I've heard so far, and I'm very comfortable with all of this. So I have no questions at this point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to raise their hand and speak on this publicly?
Dean, there, there's a phone number that keeps popping up in the corner of the screen. Is that Keith Demora trying to get in?
428, yeah. Keith, are you?
I'm in. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
I'm in. I've been listening and talking to what I want.
Okay. Didn't want to leave you out.
Thank you.
I don't see any more hands up.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman.
Let's, uh, let's close the public session.
Okay.
And let's go back to the board again to see if anybody's got any concerns. Again, my opinion is, is what I see, I'm pleased with. And the only thing is, is, is I would like to see where this is being done in phase, that extra care is taken. You know, to make sure that the site is stable. I think, you know, that we, Chad has talked about that several times. You know, that, 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 again, it's, it's your licenses and your reputation that are involved in this. And we're depending on that with you people. And, and I see no issue. Would anyone else say something?
Chad, just to clarify on your phasing, I assume that the site work for the pavement and the drainage will all be done at once, so that, you know, in the future, any other phases will be, you know, smaller in scale versus the major construction upfront.
Chad, if you don't mind, I'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Thanks, Mark. Matt Tridelli, Tridelli Fuel, and Mac Milford Realty. The phasing of the project will realistically be, like Chad discussed earlier, the propane storage first, which would probably be two tanks to start. So that would be 60,000 gallons as well as the office. The oil permitting, the oil plant permitting will take a little bit longer through DES. That may or may not happen this year before the winter. But I would expect that the office and the propane tanks will be done this summer and fall, and into the early, early winter. And then the oil would be shortly behind that. But yes, we'd make sure that the site contractor takes very good care to make sure that it's all stabilized prior to continuing a very different phase.
Very good. Thank you.
Dean, I would just like to verify that the buffer will be installed as phase one, not at a later date.
That's correct. Now, this is Chad Brandon with Fieldstone Land Consultants again. The phasing note on the plan does say that the landscaping will be completed in phase one, and all the stormwater improvements will be completed in phase one, which I think does touch on what Mr. Fugere was, was referring to. So yes.
Very good.
Anyone else from the planning board?
Keith Demora, if I may, Chairman?
Yes, you may.
I know, I think we mentioned it in the last go-around. Being a local company, you're going to be moving into town if you would think about just using local merchants to purchase some of your material to build your building from construction to office supplies. Especially one of your local neighbors right there happens to have a landscaping business.
Uh, Matt Tridelli, one more time, if you don't mind. Absolutely. We understand the importance and the, and the ties to the community. We've already sourced a couple of different vendors that are looking for numbers on that. And yes, we've been in touch with them next door on the landscaping. We're happy to, you know, visit that as necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. I, I agree. It's equally as important.
Are we ready at this point for a motion?
I think so.
I think so.
I'll make the motion to approve the site plan, PBK 2020:01, for the construction of a bulk storage of heating oil, diesel fuel, and propane.
I'll second it.
Do we need to add to the motion at all? Do we need to say something like, you know, basically with proper permitting?
The, the state permit, the only stipulation that I would place on, Mr. Chairman, is, is obviously prior to the installation of the oil, that proper state permits be in place.
That can be followed through, you know, into the minutes.
Yep.
Do I have a second? I did have.
I, I, yeah, I second it.
See, I second the motion. So we need everyone, just go down the list of members.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Dan?
Dan's on mute.
He's recused.
He recused, and I say yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
The ball is now in your court.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mark. Everyone.
Have a good night.
Moving on.
All right, let me open up the windows here. In the next case.
Hearing on PBK 2020:02, proposed site plan for the construction of a 16,000 square foot industrial building for sheet metal fabrication and warehousing. Centerville Road, map one, lot 548, zone CH, heavy commercial. Owner, applicant, Dave Currier, revocable trust.
Trying to find.
Had a chance, who's going to?
I got Dave. There's Dave. Hi, Dave.
How you doing? Dave Currier.
Dave, who, who's on your team that we need to unmute?
I, Lori Bather should be on there.
There she is.
Yeah.
Hi, Lori.
And I think Dan's, I think Dan needs to probably recuse himself because he did some of the work on this thing though, so.
Yes. So it's just you and Lori?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, it's a pretty straightforward project. There was a, a house proposed on this land that got a special exception some time ago. The construction of that never was completed. It's basically framed in a foundation. Actually, the, the septic system is in the well is still, are in as well. But those will be torn out and torn apart if this is, if this site plan is in the, other building processes is approved and goes forward. You know, we, we basically look to protect ourselves from the brewery business, which is the other line, I think it's four, 547B or A or something like that. So because it's, you know, because it is a classics road, it would be just my luck that somebody would move into the, to a house there. And then the first, the first snowstorm and call up the town saying, hey, how come you haven't plowed the road? Well, I've been plowing that road since I moved there back in 1976, so it's been, it, it would have been a, you know, kind of a hassle. However, knowing that, you know, a business is going in there, what we were, what we're proposing is we have, we have a tenant that we would like to be able to build this building for, which is in this, in the metal fabrication business. And we would like to be able to build this building. The interesting thing in terms of, you know, truck traffic and so forth into the place is that they actually use the same trucking facilities and, and as UPS and FedEx and, and Ross that comes into the brewery, not necessarily on a day-to-day basis, but, you know, definitely on a weekly basis. We probably have Ross in there, maybe some days, some, some weeks could be, you know, every day. A lot of stuff would show up with malt and grains and, and hops and so forth. Then of course UPS comes with parts and, and FedEx would come with parts and maybe small hops shipments from the Pacific Northwest. And they, this sheet metal fabrication company is, has their own delivery van. It's a, it's nothing more than a van and they, they do parts deliveries and, and small jobs, that truck. They also have a trailer for larger stuff that they put onto their pickup truck in their, in their small bumper. So in terms of, it would be very little extra traffic on the road at this particular juncture. There is the, the, there is a short box truck type thing that delivers some of the raw materials that they use. But other than that, it's, it's the same kind of delivery process that we're using at the brewery. And probably, ours is probably a little bit more, more, what's what I call it, active because we have distributors who pick up product at the brewery within their, in their small trucks. And so, you know, they, they pick up every two weeks on a Monday and a Tuesday. So in terms of that parking thing, it's not the parking thing, the, um, the additional flow of traffic on that particular road. It is a, it is, it is a paved road these days because when, when we built the building, the, the old boundary, now Hennecker Brewing Building, we actually were, um, on it, it was a dirt road the whole time. And then, you know, in mud season, it get to be a little challenging with the UPS truck. So we ultimately put down what they called, it was called dirty dirt. It was the stuff that they used and processed and from the cleanup of all the gas stations and spilled oil that was in the gas stations, they basically put it through a process and the most, they ran some kind of emulsion through it and stable that. Basically what they made it into hot top, which is basically what we refer to as coal patch. So we originally used that on the road and to, to basically to pave it. And then ultimately we wound up, because once they actually put that stuff through the process, they, they had to get rid of the product because it was no use to them. They just wanted, so they, they actually, we just trucked it in there and was able to do it. And then we used that along with some additional gravels and stuff when we actually hot topped it along with the parking lot. The hours of operation are like, would be like seven to five, Monday through Friday. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. We did request a waiver on the parking and knowing that, you know, if there was in fact change of use down the road, that we would have to come back to do something like that. But it is plenty of space in terms of the traffic flow to be able to put additional parking there. But we didn't really see that there was a need to, to actually construct that at this particular time. So that's why we're asking for that waiver. That's about, I think all the information that I have is Lori is the one that did the hydrology study and so forth with regards to dealing with the storm drain. Interestingly enough, the, the storm drain right next to the driveway, which is on the north part of the property, is, is used, it, it was put in there by our current road agent, not when he was the road agent, but when he was in the construction business. And because we were anticipating runoff from the mill across the road and it never materialized. So, so there's, there's very little drainage from there except for what comes off the road. But this is what Lori was able to put together. She could probably answer any of the questions regarding any of those kinds of issues. Unless you have any other questions, I don't think I have a lot of other information that isn't already on the, the documents.
I have a question for you, Dave.
Yeah.
Bill Marco here. Do you, do you have used three-phase power in your brewery and will there be three-phase power over here?
There is three-phase power down the road that cost the, that cost the brewery dearly.
I, I bet.
And I would hope that the public service or ever source would, you know, somehow be, you know, deal with that and maybe give me a credit when, when this guy comes online. I don't know.
We can only hope.
But I remember when I built the house down there originally, you know, I had to put all those poles in and everything there. And then when, when Ted Evans moved in there where Stone Falls Garden is today, you know, he actually paid for the first five poles, I guess, and then I paid for everything afterwards. So they, they did make an adjustment there. Whether they'll do it on this thing, I have no idea. But maybe it was, I think it was like $27,000 to bring the three-phase electricity back to the, to the brewery. But it goes right down the road.
Yeah, I only asked, I only asked that because of the dust up last summer over three-phase power coming into the center of town because they had to put another pole in. Not that that would be an issue out there, but I just wondered if it was coming down there already.
I think there is, I wouldn't be surprised if all the, the pumps that, that Chidelli on three-phase too, so they'll be probably picking three-phase right off the old Concord Road. I know that there was another tree company in there just taking down trees there to protect that whole line of three-phase power. It was down on the road just last week and this week.
Any, any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Demora. May I speak?
Yes, you may.
Dave, this type of sheet metal fabrication shop, do they have automated equipment that runs overnight?
No. They have automated equipment, but it doesn't run overnight.
Okay.
It does, it's not left unattended.
Okay.
Yeah.
On your site plan, note seven, your hours of operation, was that just a general note for another site plan or is that part of this one? This one states that the hours are Monday through Saturday and also on Sunday.
Well, really, what is the thing, note seven?
Note seven on your site plan?
Okay, let me just, let me see. Hey, can you, Mark, can you bring that up and make it a little bigger? Because the copy that I have here is so tiny, I can't read seven.
I can pick up better glasses there.
That's what it sounds like.
It has nothing to do with it. It's, yeah, okay. Yeah, it says seven to, it says, yeah, seven to five, Monday through Saturday.
And eight to 12 on Sunday.
Is that a typo? Yeah, that's probably a typo because Sunday operation wasn't, um, what, I mean, there would be some Saturday stuff, but the bulk of the business is done from, is seven to five, Monday through Friday. And, you know, there would be some Saturday, but I have no idea what that would be exactly. I can, I can have that amended if you would, if you wanted me to.
In your outline, Dave, you mentioned that the hours of operation are seven to five PM, Monday through Friday. That's it.
Yeah. Okay. So if, if, well, I know Sunday is a very, you know, working seven days a week, you could, a good entrepreneur does that all the time. But the thing is, is that I, you know, I, it's, it's, it's not normal for Sunday operation in this operation, as I understand it.
So why don't we, item seven?
Say that again?
Scott speaking, why don't we just have you strike item seven on the notes to put the correct hours?
Okay, then I just do that in a form of a letter, Mark?
Oh, you can just amend the plan later, Dave. I mean, I, I think, you know, in, in some areas of the community, you know, hours of operation, I think would be a concern, but given this is our industrial zone, you know, heavy industrial.
And in fact, that they, the, you know, Stone Falls Garden operates on Saturday and Sundays and so does the brewery, so.
I, I would suggest, Bill Marco here, I would suggest that you keep seven as it is and then amend the, the verbiage on the, the other verbiage. The narrative, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I can do that. And was that in the letter that, the, the overview?
Yes, the, the narrative, the site plan.
Like the cover, the cover letter thing.
Yes, the cover letter, yeah.
It's enclosure number two.
Yeah.
This, this is Keith Demora again. Now, I understand what you're saying there, Bill, but I would think the hours of operation on Sundays, I understand the brewery is open on Sundays and so is in Stonefall Gardens, which is more of a retail type business that people are coming to do something on Sundays. I'm fairly familiar with sheet metal shops, so I know when I bang metal, it's loud. So on Sunday, if they're banging metal, I, that, that's my only concern is the noise on a Sunday. I'm all for somebody working and making a living.
They would be up to, they would be up to and a butter to bring that forward, right?
Is this the first hearing?
Yes, and the, the closest to butter is, is the Stonefall Gardens.
Just voicing my concern.
Any other concerns or questions from the board? Dave, I've only got a few questions. Is, is there room on that site for the 32 parking spots?
Oh, yeah, because like the property, see where the, at, at the south end of the property?
Yes.
Is, is, that whole section there could be developed into parking.
I would be, you know, I would see no problem with giving you the waiver for the, the number of spaces for construction and this tenant. But I would like a covenant in that that stated that if 32 were necessary, they would be put in by a different tenant.
Correct. I, that, I, I don't, we don't have any problem with that. I don't anyway. So I can't imagine, because like, Mark and I actually talked about this in terms of, you know, having to come back, have a covenant in there to come back if we needed, if it was a change of use.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have any problem with that because like, you know, we have, we've actually built on, on, and this was a long time before site plan review, but when we built the boundary building, that building had, you know, parking spaces along the whole back and the back of the building. To the point now where we have leased for a dollar a year, the, the, basically the, the meeting room in the back of that, of the building that has its own separate interest to the American Legion post. So they have parking out back there for that. So, so that they can hold their meetings there so that when the, you know, when the town music concerts go on, we used to, if it rained, we used to get booted out of the community center on Tuesday nights for the Legion meeting. And then we would get down to the brewery and, and so we've dressed up what is basically used to be the old break room and the conference room and the bathrooms at the brewery in that one section that is totally separate from the brewery to the American Legion. And so they're using those parking spaces that we built, well, you know, they're dirt, but they're, they're gravel, rather, out back in the building. So, so yeah, I, I assume that we would be, do the same thing here in this situation.
Mr. Chairman, just want to put on the record that we did receive a, a letter from the Army Corps today, who's in a butter to this project, and they have no objections to the proposal.
Very good. Anything else from the board or if not, we'll open this up to the public?
I'm done.
Okay, if we could open this up into the public session? Are we aware of anyone?
Bob Pagano here.
Oh, Bob.
Hi. Yeah, just in a comment in regards to the hours of operation, I think it'd be unwise to limit their hours of operation in that companies, such as fabrication companies, bid on contracts and sometimes the time constraint is short and they have to work weekends to do it, to get that job. They would have to work Sundays. They didn't, they wouldn't take that lightly because they have to pay mightily. But I don't think we'd want to limit them in gaining those opportunities as ultimately it would bring opportunities to their employers or their employees and hence to Hennecker as well. Just thought I'd say that.
Thank you. Any other note, comments from public?
I'll check one more time, Mr. Chairman. I don't see anyone's. I'm not seeing any hands. You, what, Tia?
No, I'm not either.
Is seven three four five, Keith?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we will close this public session. I would like to comment on the hours. I mean, we have, the, the, the only negative that I could see for them working a Sunday would be noise. What do we have for Sunday no noise ordinances? Anything, Mark?
Our, our ordinance in town exempts business operations, Mr. Jim.
We, we do have noise ordinances going, I believe it's like dusk until dawn.
Right.
Yeah.
But those are, if I, if I remember right, those are nuisance, aren't they nuisance noises?
Yeah, I think they have more to deal with, you know, squealing tires, music.
Parties and things like that.
Right, I mean, business operations. Right. I mean, business operations can operate 24/7. We've, we've had some concerns from people, um, who are across the, the highway from HHP. Oftentimes, um, because of their workload, they've had to operate very late at night, uh, sometimes starting at 3 o'clock in the morning. And I know that's been an issue, but, um, businesses operating at that hour are specifically exempted from the town's, um, noise ordinance.
I, Bill Marco here, I also think that this is a little bit different, and that the noise would be inside the building for the most part. Um, it's down on that dead-end road. Um, you know, the, the noise from HHP is, is, I imagine, a lot of it's coming from outdoor operations. So, uh, I would, I, this is a commercial zone, and, and people, and, and businesses do operate, uh, uh, you know, Saturdays and Sundays as needed to fill orders or emergency orders. So, um, yeah, I, I'd be inclined to allow this to go through with a, with Sunday operations. I mean, that's, that's, that's business.
Yeah, you know, what, well, what, one of the other things that I would point out is, is that I think the, the worst noise pollution that we have in that whole neighborhood area is Cousin Knows Lumber Company, when the trucks back in with their backup alarm at 2 o'clock in the morning and dump a load. Trust me, especially in the summertime, when you have the windows open.
That was David Currier speaking.
Yes, I'm sorry, David Currier speaking.
Um, Mr. Chairman, we do have a question. Um, Mark, the person has their hand up. It's Kuro Sarah E6910. They need to be unmuted.
Oh, there we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
This is Darren Black from Stone Falls Gardens. How are you doing?
Oh, good evening.
Um, just wanted to add that, uh, you know, as, as the nearest, the butter, we don't have any objections to, you know, to the proposal. The only concern that I would raise would be nighttime noise. But, uh, you know, as long as we could be assured that there would be no nighttime noise, we don't have any objections.
Thank you. I think, you know, where this is a site, site plan, I mean, somebody has got to come up with the number of hours. And to me, you could have, uh, Monday through Saturday with no issue. Uh, they don't, and they're not asking for nighttime hours. Sunday, Sunday hours, you know, I could see them definitely, if they had a big shipping order, to go out, having to pack it up on a Sunday. And more power to them for the business. But I, I think if we just put in, you know, using proper common sense and courtesy for the neighbors, and leave it at that. But we have to come up with something concrete. We just can't have two sets of numbers here.
I think the consensus was that the num, the, the Note 7 is going to stay, Mr. Chairman, and, and he's going to amend the narrative to reflect that.
Very good. Any other concerns? Any questions? I think we should move forward. Oh, quick, lighting. Where most of this is daytime. I mean, basically, I think the only time with this type of business with the hours we're talking would be security lighting. Uh, and obviously, if it wasn't bizarre. Do we need to note something in there about lighting?
Is, the only lighting really is, is on the building over some of the entrances, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
It's pretty limited.
And those, and those are strictly for, you know, for, uh, basically 360-degree, um, coverage for security reasons, obviously, when the police, because the police drive down there through, I mean, the brewery ironically, and that has, I think, seven or eight, maybe nine even, um, uh, outside lighting that is required to us by TTB, which is the Tobacco and Trade Bureau of the U.S. Department of Treasury, is for, for, for security, to protect their taxes that we pay them on beer. But, uh, yeah, that's, but the, 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 the lighting on the building would be, 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 basically, there'd be lights on, on all four sides of the building for security purposes, so that when the police get down and make their patrol through there, they would have some assistance beside the spotlights on their cruises.
Very good. Well, we can't accept a motion on the approval of this, because we haven't even accepted the application yet. So let's do that.
So I'll make a motion to accept the application.
Ryan Haley second.
Okay, let me get my checklist here. Uh, Tia?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Dan can't vote, and I say yes. Now, do we feel confident enough to proceed with this this evening?
Yes.
I do.
I think so.
Could I just say one more thing that I, that, one of the things that we, I, we've had a discussion with the, uh, the fire chief about the, the existing building on the, on the lot. And we've offered to have them use it as a training exercise for the fire department. And, uh, we would need to get some type of certification that there's, uh, obviously no asbestos or any other hazardous materials in the building and stuff. And so we've, that's one of the things that, in terms of getting rid of the building that's there, they will use it as a fire exercise.
Seems to be that neighborhood burns anything they don't want. You and Taylor. I have, I have no issue with that. If they want to play, uh, they do have to, they have their own certification program. They're the ones that putting their neck on the line, uh, when they, when they do throw the match in. But, uh, sounds good. And you did state in your narrative that the sewer, you know, will be just excavated, but the well, my God, we'd never throw a good well away in New Hampshire.
Well, it's actually, we actually, uh, when we were plotting the, the spot for the location of the actual building, we, we actually, uh, uh, put the well outside of the, the, the range of the thing, so that, because we were trying to figure out how to, you know, to, obviously, to save that well. And, uh, we, obviously, the septic system, uh, and, uh, was already installed at the house, but it was never used, as I understand it. And, uh, so that will all be dug up. We will, will be able to, uh, retrieve the, the tank from that. And, uh, and also the power, um, if, it, the power's already, was our, at one point, was already connected to the building as well, which, so we'll be able to get, retrieve a lot of that stuff, the panels and stuff. Yeah, you don't want to get rid of the well.
Um, I have a procedural question for Mark or Dean.
Yep.
Um, if we make the motion to approve, do we, is, is the waiver request for the parking part of the motion, or is that something we do, act on different separate?
I would suggest that the waiver be a separate motion. I was going to just mention that when, when Dave stopped talking. So, yeah, I would suggest we, um, address the waivers.
We might run out of life on that one.
Okay, does that come first?
Yes, I would suggest, uh, a motion be made to waive the parking, um, as there's adequate, uh, space on the site, uh, with the condition, obviously, that, um, the applicant can come back if a change of use was to occur, and obviously, more parking was, was needed.
Well, I'll take, I'll take a stab at it if we're ready for it.
Go, Bill.
Okay, I'll make a motion to waive the parking requirement, and, uh, allow for 22 spaces instead of the 32 spaces that is normally required.
I'll second it.
And let's, let's put a little verbiage in there that, you know, if there is a change of use, that they would come back to us, and that covers all our bases.
Yep. And so, any future change of use would require a, um, the board, the planning, Hennecker Planning Board's approval.
For parking.
For parking, right.
For parking, yes.
For parking. Tia, did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Very good. Let's go down the list. Tia?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Dan?
Dan's off.
And can, and I say yes, so it's unanimous. Now, on to the big motion.
The only stipulation or approval would be amending the narrative to reflect the hours of operation.
And then go in the motion to approve, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I would make the motion to approve PB Case 2020:02, the site plan for the construction of a 16,000 square foot industrial building for sheet metal fabrication and warehousing. Uh, note that, uh, note number 7 on the plan, hours of operation, uh, are, are in play, and the narrative that was provided will be changed to reflect that.
Suckled up.
Was that Scott the second?
Yes.
Yes. So let's run down the road. Tia?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
And Dean is yes. Mr. Carrier, I believe we have kicked the hot rock into your zone.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I like the project.
Now for the next permits.
Thank you to the board.
Thanks, Laura. Laurie?
Okay. One more thing to look at this evening. PB Case 2020:03, proposed site plan for the construction of an 11-foot by 61-foot ground-mounted solar array. 88 Village Green, applicant revision energy, owner, James and Bethany Newcomb, map 2, lot 232, zoned RV.
The Newcombs, who, who's, who from the revisions going to present tonight?
Um, I think on here that should be able to speak would be Jeff McGlaughlin and, and Mike French.
Jeff McGlaughlin.
Hi there.
And Mike French. Okay.
Uh, just a general statement, and I think I speak for the board, you know, is, uh, but certainly for myself, is, is the whole idea of ground mount, uh, put us into kind of a, a, a large concern, mainly because, uh, if we were to develop something that we could have in, you know, our zoning, it would have been huge. I don't know if we ever would have had a voter that would have read enough about that to, uh, to say yes or no. And so we decided to do it by this method, and congratulations on being number It's just, uh, we only figured that we would be far better off to look at these as we came. Again, we're, we're trying to stop neighborhood feuds and quite a few other hot rocks in the process. And, um, you know, and basically, uh, be supportive of solar. And this is the way we decided to do it. And, uh, looking forward to your proposal. Uh, it just seems to me funny that, um, looking at every map and every display that we got, this whole proposition looks like you could have done it and never even asked us and gotten away, because nobody ever would have known.
We were tempted to try that route, but figured it wouldn't be wise.
Yeah, yeah, well, some, you know, it'd be somebody that squeals on you. There's always somebody that squeals on you. And, uh, more than interested in listening to your proposal.
Do, do we accept it?
Yeah, we probably ought to do that, Bill. Let's do, let's have two out of three that we remembered to accept. I was tempted, because I was sitting here at home, to put a sticky note on the screen that said, geez, remember to accept it, but look at it. And I said, no, I'm not going to do that. Tia?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Dan, did you have anything to do with this?
I did not.
Well, can you give us a vote here?
I'd say yes.
And I say yes. So that's unanimous. So we've accepted. Let's, uh, let's wait, go right into our proposal.
Okay, so should this be something that I talk about, or is?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, Chairman and Board, thanks for, uh, for hearing, uh, this application. And, as you know, it's to put in the 61-foot ground mount. Uh, we're choosing a ground mount, because the roof on our house does not face the right direction, um, and probably wouldn't be large enough anyways. As you can see from the, uh, uh, map there, that it's in our backyard. Um, and, uh, there's about, I don't know, maybe 100 feet of woods to our two closest to butters on either side of us. Um, so they can't really see it. Um, so it, and it's well back from the, uh, property line and the setback requirements. Um, so I think it fits all the, yeah, that's a nice map that shows sort of the location in regards to the setbacks. And, uh, um, in that nice Google photo, you can see our circular wood So I'm not sure what else you might want to know about this in regards to this, the, you know, the new stipulations for these applications.
I think one of the only concerns that I have is, is, um, I'm, and I'm not fully schooled in the whole process, maybe somebody else can fill it in. But with standby generators becoming popular, these solar arrays, your house catches on fire, your garage is on fire, the fire department comes, um, how do they kill it? Well, there's, there seems to be no standard yet at this point that I can find. But it, um, I think we need to take into the idea that these cutoffs for the fire department should drop the power out. I mean, uh, P, ever source is very easy, you know, you can take the meter out or cut down the pole, one of the two, but it goes from there. But it, uh, did you have anything on clarification of where that cutoff would be?
Uh, so I think, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Jim, but Mike French here. Um, yes, if you take a look at the page that's up on the screen now, the plot plan, and you go to the left, to, to, take a look at the northwest corner of the house, yeah, right there, yeah? And look at that, uh, tag, just to the left of that utility, that, that indicates the location of the utility meter and the shut-off for the solar system. So in this case, the, the solar shut-off is right beside the utility meter. So the fire department would arrive at the house, they'd look at the utility meter, they'd say, aha, look at that, there's a solar shut-off right there, and they'd throw that switch, and that would shut off the solar array.
Now, from this plan, that's the only concern I had. Uh, hearing from other members of the board?
Yeah, I think, so with the aerial photo being taken, you know, in midsummer, and it doesn't take into account, you know, wintertime and what butters might be able to see with the loss of leaves, is there any way we can do a site walk, just so we can see how much area there actually is, um, to look at the buffer? And also, the other question, where it's located on this line? Are any other trees going to be taken down to, to make room for this?
Uh, this, this is Jim speaking. Um, all the trees that need to be taken down for the installation of this are already down. And, um, actually, we were just out there, uh, this past week, uh, with revision, um, marking out the exact location of the solar array. And, uh, it hasn't leafed out yet. We did take the time to see if we could see from the location of the array, either one of our butters. Um, and you can barely make out the houses, you're looking through woods, but you're looking through woods below the level of the leaves. So I don't think it matters whether it's winter or summer in regards to, uh, what you're looking through. You are welcome to come. are welcome to come and see the site. I don't have a problem with that.
So Marco here, I, I took a drive around the loop and looked down the driveway. I couldn't even see the house, much less where the solar array would go. And, and leave, you know, we don't have leaves yet. So I don't think, I don't see that as much of a concern here.
As a point of information, Mike French here again, the distance from the northwest corner or the west side of the array to the two nearest abutting houses is about 200 feet to, to each one.
Likewise, Bill, I also drove by and it's clearly out behind any of the other building structures.
Anyone else?
This is a, this is a conditional use permit process, Mr. Chairman, that, that's new for the board. There are a series of provisions that the board must agree with. And I'm just going to go over these quickly so that we, we know what the standard of review is. The use is specifically authorized as a conditional use and it certainly make, meets that. The development is proposed. Location will comply with all requirements of the Hennecker Site Plan Review Regulations, as well as specific conditions established by the board. The applicant has requested a waiver from a survey, you know, grading landscape, detailed engineered plan. I don't have a problem with that waiver, given the site location and the drawings that were submitted. Standard number three is the use will not materially endanger public health or safety. Number four, the use may provide adequate screening to ensure adjacent property values are not adversely impacted. Screening may be provided by maintaining existing vegetation or through the installation of specific evergreen landscaping, suitable fencing or accommodation thereof. Such screenings shall be maintained during the operation, operation lifetime of the project. And number five, in granting the CUP, the plan would may impose reasonable conditions and restrictions to maintain the purpose.
Very good. Mark, does this necessarily still need to be open to the public?
Oh yeah, this is a public hearing. Yep.
Okay. If the board has nothing else, we will open it into public.
I see one hand up. Jim Dennis? Jim, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, Mr. Chairman. We are neighbors of Jim and I think their address is 88, we are 50. And as you can see from the picture, we, we have a, it's basically a loop and we are to the left or the north of where they are. Yeah, just draw it out to the north a little bit. We, we walk that loop continuously. We've been here since October and I've never even seen our house. I just have no idea what's down there. It's a long, long driveway in this array that's going to be there in its present state. We just don't have any issue with. So as neighbors, I would say, go for it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Bob Begano here?
Yes.
Hi. I subscribe to a number of engineering magazines and some time ago I received a copy of a magazine and had an in-depth article about renewables in Germany. Germany has about the highest in, in Europe. They do have the highest in Europe of renewables. They also pay the highest amount for their energy. It turns out on just a physics level, solar cells can never produce more energy than it takes to manufacture them. They're supplemented by green legislation, taxpayers support it all the way through. The ultimate thing that happens in a region where you have a lot of solar is that the, the power company is forced by legislation to buy the energy from, from the solar producers. However, they have to produce the amount of differential, the amount of electricity for that region, not counting the solar, because they can't tell whether they'll be under clouds or not. So they have to constantly produce it. They can't use the energy they don't want, but they're forced to pay for the energy. And the only way they can offset that cost is to raise everybody else's rates. Ultimately, that's what happens. Germany pays the highest rates in the world for energy. They have 17% renewables. That's the reality. It's physics. It's not anything else. It's, it's, it's just numbers. It's just physics. Anybody can look into that. If you look into it deeply enough, you'll find out that that's so. So the more of these panels we have in our neighborhoods and our, in Hennecker, the higher energy prices we will all pay. That's a reality of it. There you have it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I don't see anybody else's, anybody else have a hand up. Do you, Tia?
No, I don't.
That's interesting. So he keeps his finger in this area here. Makes me nervous.
So I have a quick question. It does say that it's a 14.3 kilowatt grid tiered solar system. How, how is this going to be going back onto the grid or what is the current consumption that you're looking to utilize this for?
Yeah. So this, we're not doing battery. So it's going to go onto the grid. It will not cover 100% of our electrical needs.
It will not?
This was Jim.
It will not?
It will not.
But you're putting it, but you're selling it back to the grid?
Yes. Well, so basically because it depends on, like, if you look at it in total, it doesn't meet 100% of our needs. But at certain times we'll be drawing from the grid, at other times we'll be giving to the grid. Depends on, you know, if it's a Wednesday afternoon and we're all at work and it's beautifully sunny out, then it goes back to the grid. If it's a Saturday and it's not sunny, we're pulling from the grid.
So Marco here, you know, no matter what agreement he has with the power company, we as a board, you know, have to roll on the appropriateness of this proposal. So that may be good information to know, but it's.
Well, if you remember our discussion when we were discussing how we were going to move forward with these plans, we had three different section or three different tiers. And I think it is relevant to this discussion because we were looking at the baseline homeowners on where we would start separating out when we had people come in for conditional use permits or full site plan reviews.
But we didn't make that distinction, did we?
But we discussed it and this is what these meetings right now are trying to help us decide. So it's good to have on record.
Okay. Yeah. But it, it doesn't rise to the level of, of commercial, that's for sure.
Anyone else from the public?
Am I considered public as a representative of revision or would it be appropriate for me to make a comment?
Yeah, you're part of the application if you're with revision. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, just to clear up one thing, the, the average homeowner, home consumption is around 10 kilowatts. So this is a 14 kilowatt system. It's, it's slightly larger. It is, I think, inaccurate. It is not physics to say that all electricity will necessarily go up. There's so much involved in that in terms of policy that is beyond the scope of what we're talking about here. So I don't want to get into, you know, whether someone thinks that the entire issue of solar is virtuous or not. But this is a pretty normal-sized, maybe slightly larger than average, a home solar array. And I'm a residential designer. So that's the experience I base that on.
I think too, we've got to bring up the point that, that we can, we are not here to discuss, to prove or disprove the value of solar, you know, from a planning board standpoint. We are looking to come up with a solution so people can go ahead of their wishes if they follow our zoning. And there will always be that con, you know, conversation on solar and wind and everything else other than, you know, buying it directly from a power company. And it, it's just the manner it is. I think if you look at this whole proposal with the idea that we have just spoken with Jim on, and he is the closest one view-wise, other than one other neighbor, we have not heard from that neighbor?
Which neighbor?
Any other butters?
No, there's no one else's, no one else has raised their hand or no one else on the meeting is, is.
Well, like, this is Bob Begano. I, I guess I'm not a neighbor, but I'm a neighbor on the grid and my electric bill will be going up because they're selling energy to the, to the company that can't use it. That's, that's just a reality. Nobody can argue that realistically. Those are just numbers. You can look into the engineering on it. That's just absolutely so. Our energy costs in Hennecker will go up because of this array, period.
So Mark, we haven't heard from 84 Village Green.
Could, could I speak? This is Jim. So 84 Villas Green is Jerry and Marilyn Scala. They're not on this call as far as I know, but I'm very good friends with them and they're fully in support of what we're doing.
So we'd actually have to hear from them, but I didn't know if Mark got any correspondence from them. Sometimes neighbors will submit letters or emails in advance.
I did not see anything, Tia, no.
Okay.
Jim, could you give your last name too for the minute taker?
Oh, sure. It's Newcomb.
Newcomb, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Then we will close the public hearing. Any more concerns from the board or Mark?
Nope. I, I, again, the, the waiver should be done separately from the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Would someone like to state that waiver, please?
The requested waiver is from section 3-2, which is that the development will comply with all requirements of the Hennecker Site Plan Regulations.
I moved it. We approved the waiver.
Second, Dan. This is Dan.
Ryan Haley seconds.
Can we go down the list, Tia?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Heidi? Dan?
Yes.
Dean, yes. That takes care of the waiver.
Then we'll just move to, you know, motion to approve as presented.
Ryan Haley makes a motion to approve PB case 2020, semicolon, 03, proposed site plan to construct 11 by 61-foot ground-mounted solar array in 88 Village Green.
Scott will second.
Scott, you second that?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Dean says ye. Yes. Unanimous. Thank you, people.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Your time.
Yes, thank you very much.
It actually worked out.
You're so surprised.
Miracles do happen. Thank you for your help, Tia.
You're welcome. So you need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Dan.
And I would suppose when the whole world goes dark, we don't have to go through this list again. I don't think anybody's going to vote against it. Thank you. I think this went just about as good as it possibly could have.
Yes.
We might as well get good at it because unless the whole world gets healthy real quick, we'll be here again next month.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night, thanks.
Thank you.